Call and order the meeting of July the 6th, all Stanford Police Legions.
What do you need to apply by the United States of America? And to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, welcome everybody. We got a short agenda. And that's good.
Yes.
Leslie, can you call it out?
Councilperson Miller.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Goodweiler.
Here.
Stulman.
Yeah.
Sexton absent. Mayor Rockland is absent.
Alrighty, we're gonna start by swearing in Officer Dean. Believe there's a typo with her name, it's spelled wrong. S T T E M.
Oh, sorry, I'm not like that.
No, we got it, side by side. Usually we read off the same side. So, would like you, you have to raise your right hand?
Yeah.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
Hi Catherine, Dean, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
That I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability discharge all duties as a full-time police officer in the city of West Branch as now or hereafter required by law.
And that I will faithfully and impartially to the best of my ability discharge all duties as a full-time police officer for the city of West Branch as now or hereafter required by law.
Woo-hoo!
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Alright, public comment. This is anyone wishing to address the city council may come forward when invited. Please state your name, your address, and record. Public comments are typically limited to three minutes and written comments may be submitted to the deputy. I do have Kathy Steen would like to say something.
Hi, I'm Kathy Steen, with citizen of the West Branch community, also a full-time West Branch police officer. I want to say thank you to the city and to the council for hiring me full-time sooner than later. I'm here, I'm grateful, I'm here because I want to present a proposal to the council, ask that you recognize and validate my five years of service as a part-time employee. As I was working close to full-time hours during my five-plus years, I respectfully request the council to approve my accrued vacation pay benefit at five years of service. I think I've established my loyalty and commitment to the city and to the community and relationships with the kids and citizens. No one has ever made me feel like a part-time officer. Everybody's treated me with respect and as an equal. So I'm respectfully asking you to consider the five-plus years for my accrual on vacation pay. Thanks for the consideration.
We'll discuss it. Can't discuss it now. We can discuss it now, we can't do anything but discuss it. Why discuss it? Alright, discuss it.
I agree with her point, she's been here more than five years. I am working almost, as a part-time employee, almost working full-time. I have no reservations about bumping her to five years seniority.
She didn't give me a piece of paper. So, my question would be, five years, what are you accrued, two weeks or three weeks?
Hundred twenty-eight hours.
A little over three weeks in a day.
Yeah, be a difference of twenty-four hours, three days.
Not even worth discussing. Agreed. We have to bring it back?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll bring something back.
Appreciate it.
Anything else for the public comment? Alrighty, we'll move on to approve agenda, consent agenda. I need a, do I read this stuff first? Number one, a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the city council meeting of June 1st, 2020, and a motion to approve claim reports. Can I get a motion? Dean, second, Stulman, discuss? Call roll, Leslie.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes. Alright, public hearing, non-consent agenda, resolution nineteen sixteen, a resolution approving, accepting the CDBG procurement policy. I need a motion to move. Dean, second. Goodweiler, discuss. All roll.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Miller.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Alright, number two, discussion item regarding the paid parental maternity fraternity adoption leave policy. So discussion item, would you not need a motion?
Paul, I'd like to thank you for breaking this down into simple terms. Your proposal makes sense and I would support it.
Tony? Make your hand up.
I'm just making a motion.
Oh.
No.
I agree.
So, obviously I agree with it, I wrote it. Nick?
I agree with it, I just have the one question. I don't know if Catherine has a copy of it or not.
He does not.
I actually have it, well, if you, if it's not in the packet, I don't.
Not the packet, would you like me to read it?
Sure.
I'll read it. So, West Branch maternity fraternity adoption leave plan. Maternity leave policy mirrors the planned benefits set forth by the short-term disability policy. An employee may use additional current sick leave and accrued vacation at the end of the disability policy for additional time of the twelve weeks of total time off. More than twelve weeks can be utilized from sick leave, vacation, sick bank for complications. Paternity leave policy will be eighty hours of paid time off. Employee may use current sick leave, accrued vacation at the end of the policy. Sick bank may be used after that only if complications. Adoption policy follows the paternity leave policy. It's only for outside the family unit. So, in case you didn't quite understand why I put that in there, like I adopted my stepdaughter. I shouldn't get eighty hours of time off to adopt a kid that went with me for six years anyway. There's adjustment period, whereas adjusted is we's don't get. This is more like if you was to adopt a child that's not related, you're not your brother's kid or something like that. I don't think that's how it works. And then I guess the statement that everybody has problems with or is questioning was at the end, it says maternity leave is only available if a baby comes out of your body.
Did you say maternity?
Eternity.
Okay. I didn't know what you were worried about. Go ahead, Nick.
I said I didn't really have an issue with the statement, I agree with it, I just didn't know where that would catch us in the legal hemisphere of
hemisphere of it, or somebody else have your baby.
Or even
I, why don't, I understand what you're getting at, so since we have to adopt it formally, it's just a discussion item, let me clean that up. Or just not clean it up, but just, just make sure we are I'll put some legalese to it and then, so when we, when we come back next meeting, we'll have it all ready to go. I know what you're getting at though.
Yeah, that was my only question, other than
Okay, I will, I'll look at that and I'll get a copy from Redmond and take a look at that and see if I can wordsmith a little bit.
Alright.
Have you given any thought to what it might cost, city? We don't have anything budgeted for this type of leave.
I mean, my only thing on that is, it's not like this happens every other month or every other year or
Well, it's, we're going to have someone go on paternity leave soon and I have no idea how much, but we're looking at learning what the expense is going to be very quickly.
Well, at the end of the day, we were gonna pay those, that person anyway, correct?
We're only going to pay vacation and if there's sickness, then you need to pay sick leave for any additional beyond that would be something we do not have approved.
Well, no, what I'm getting at is, is just for an example, let's say the chief's salary, so that doesn't count. Leslie, Leslie has, has a actually, that's not gonna cost the same thing anyway, because that's short-term disability. So it would have to be the fraternity aspect of it. Okay, Gordon, you had, you had a child, your wife had a child. We pay you forty hours a week to do a job, right? So it's budgeted, that money's budgeted. Because we budgeted for you to work. I mean, the part that's not going to be budgeted is how are we gonna cover while you're gone? And we have a certain amount of overtime that's built into most, all of the all of the departments. I mean
For some people. But it's, it's going to be an unbudgeted expense this year. And I don't know how much, but we will find out.
I guess we'll find out, we'll make it work.
Just a rarity.
Yeah, we'll make it work. What do you think of it?
Yeah.
What the rest of us have right now?
We seem to think it's nice and simple and easy.
I think eighty hours paternity leave is being I can't really say. Because I've never been in the situation and I don't have a plan on it. So I haven't walked in either shoes.
Well, I think this is a good start because I think change is coming and they're gonna expand the paternity, maternity leave. You know, federal if you're a federal worker, you'll get eight weeks of paternity leave paid.
Where's city?
Here's, here's what I, I've had, I have had no children, but my wife, my wife has had three of them. And I had paternity leave for absolutely none of them. Now, the one, I actually was lucky enough that I had vacation time, so I took the only week of vacation that I had for a year, I took for when my child was born. And it was, it was a necessity, I mean, there was two other children that needed to be taken care of while she was laid up in the hospital, so I had to do it. The other ones, I just told her, hey, I get off at five, hold it in, you know? You know, and you know, that's just the way we did it, but I'm, I wish, I wish I'd have had the opportunity to hang out with, I don't know if I'd want to spend two weeks you know, a little bit of time.
Maximum.
A little bit, yeah. A little bit of time would've been alright.
I had to do it out of other medical necessity reasons.
So this is what we're looking at now?
Yeah. I mean, and I guess, when I was looking at it, I guess, you know, as far as the maternity leave, we're giving them what the benefit the plan gives them, which, if I wouldn't have by the plan, if we weren't, we're supposed to give them that, you know? And then the rest of it, they're just using their own stuff, so, you know, what are we out? The big one is the paternity leave, because up to this point, we've never offered, we've never offered that anyway, shape before. But even then, it's only two weeks and then after that, we're making them use their stuff, so
Thank you, thank you, good compromise.
Yeah.
Just a discussion. But it sounds like we're probably done bringing it back now. Let's go around.
Short-term, six weeks.
Short-term, six weeks. Yes.
Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, so just, her question was, so short-term disability, I'm pregnant and I'm off for six weeks. That's gonna be longer than that, no, I'll be off for six weeks paid by the insurance. My check is coming from the insurance portion. And then after the six weeks, if I decide I want to take twelve weeks, I can take six weeks, I can stay off six weeks longer. Who's paying for that? Am I using all my approvals or is this
So, the way I had it was, you could use your accrued sick leave and your accrued vacation after the six weeks. The sick bank, I had that I kind of thought maybe that was for complications, so you couldn't use your sick bank unless it were complication. You could only use accrued stuff.
How many times? Sick bank is accrued.
Well, but it's not your annual accrue.
Well, we accrue sick leave three point six an hour, six, three point six nine hours every pay period. So that goes into this bank, as we call it, it's just, it goes into our bank, that's what, I guess is what we call it. So that can be used for doctor's appointments, taking visits to the doctor, dentist, all of that.
Actually, then I don't care if you wipe out your sick bank, that's great.
Right, because then, then that takes away that other liability at the end, when you retire, you don't have it, so yeah, so
I thought that's why we had to set sick bank so high, was so the short-term's only gonna pay sixty percent, right? And then the other forty percent can come out of your sick bank to make your whole.
That, that could be used for a portion of it, it can also be used to go to the doctor when you have doctor's appointments. In the case of maternity, you're gonna have doctor's appointments, you're gonna have, you know, one every month and then later on, you're gonna go more often, so yeah, so it'll whittle it down.
That was the discussion, and we did find out that taxes would be assessed to that.
That's taxed.
It is taxed. We didn't know at first, but we clarified it is taxed, so
So, short-term, a long-term, hard cash?
See, that wasn't really part of the idea, but
I don't, I don't, that's just what we talked about last time, I
Yeah, just so we're, just so we're clear that, you know, if I want to take six weeks more, the city's not paying me unless I'm using my accrue, my approvals. I'm using six, a combination of six weeks and vacation until I decide I don't want to run myself empty and I gotta come back and pay because you might be
Okay, so not to throw a wrench in this, I just, what happens if there's a early, she has to be bedridden early, how'd that, how'd that work? Is that, is that a return or is that a pickup from?
That could be, it depends, since we haven't had a short-term disability claim, that might be, that actually might kick short-term disability in first. So you might have a pre, you might have a different condition, it's not maternity leave at that point, it's just a complication of that. So you actually might be gone more, so you might be on. And if, and I'm not sure if it's two separate
I would think it would be.
Problem, so, you know, here's the first six weeks and here's the next six weeks.
Right, it's gotta be a doctor.
Yeah.
If it's short-term disability, it's gotta be a doctor, you can't just be, I don't want to walk, I'm gonna lay in my bed for two weeks. It's gotta be
Right.
Yeah, doctor, yeah. If you do that, you're gonna use your vacation.
Same way on the back end, if something happened during delivery, you know, then that becomes a new issue, you know, and it runs concurrently, it depends on what happens.
Is our short-term, go to eight weeks if you have
No, it says in there, it's six weeks.
Six weeks, both, okay. That makes it even easier.
In old school, people would take two weeks, you know, eight weeks would be the tops regardless, and then they would take their vacation or sick or whatever they had.
Anything else? Alright, I think you know what, what we want from you, huh, Redmond?
Yes.
Alright, number three, a discussion item, a potential purchase of a disc mower for roadside digging, non-budgeted item. Let's discuss, we don't need a motion. I have a question, Matt. Is this disc mower gonna throw crap all over the street like the old one does?
No, that's the whole reason why we want to go to this type of mower. It's more like county uses, it just lays it down and leaves it where it lays instead of spreading it everywhere. The mower we have wasn't really intended for what it's being used for.
The second question I have is, it's a non-budgeted item, so how do you plan on paying for it? Where do you think that money's gonna come from?
We have the equipment set aside that has about eighteen thousand dollars in it right now. That basically is just sitting there until we find a use for it, equipment-wise. I mean, it could be, basically what we were intending to use it for was if we had something like this or something unforeseen that came up, because basically the money we take out every year of our normal budget pays for the equipment that's on the schedule for that year. And then we would also just keep putting into this any extra, or hopefully that's what we would do, to where we just have a little bit building up, so it's not like we don't have the money, it's just that it wasn't budgeted and the money wasn't appropriated from, so we need permission to use the money that we have saved there in order to do this.
So then the other question I have was, I know that there was talk about a, maybe not a new dump truck, but a different dump truck. Was this set aside money part of how you was planning on paying for that or was that budgeted in the budget?
No, it was budgeted in the budget. Basically, that, yeah, everything that we would need to purchase that truck should be in the budget, so it wouldn't, this wouldn't affect that in any way.
That's all the questions I have. Does anybody else have any questions?
What's the plan with the mower that you were using? Are we getting rid of it or?
I think, I think we'd just get rid of it, it'd be useful for our big open fields that we have left, but right now, I'm having, I'm having those bailed anyway and we're not cutting them. So, it's kind of just one of those things sitting around that is really expensive to fix if something goes wrong on it. One of the gearboxes went out like three years ago, it's, it's twenty-plus years old, going on if you're on thirty years old, we replaced the gearbox and it was about thirty-five hundred bucks, so when you look at, there's three gearboxes on that mower. One went out, so if the other ones are same age, same all things even, we're looking at, you know, seven grand to replace those other two gearboxes should they go out over the next few years. So, I would say it'll go down the road and we'd take that back in the set aside as well, so I don't know what we'd get from that, a few thousand dollars probably. Because I think we got it for pretty low price from the DOT when they got it.
So the other, the other question I have is, I noticed that two options, one's John Deere, one's a case international. It looked like one was a category one and one was a category two, that tractor just a category one or is it actually a two?
It would handle up to, I just had them give me the one that they said would be the biggest they would put on it. And actually I had Paul, Paul Neal got the prices on it, but, so that tractor would handle either one of those. But it would be pushing it on the bigger one. And that, that's part of our problem too, we looked at some used ones and the used ones are in the I don't know, they're somewhere about three thousand dollars less than a new one. They have no warranty on them and they have hours on them. So that's kind of why we're looking at those two. And the used ones that actually fit our mower are harder to find, just, or our tractor, because our mower is a little smaller than what, or the tractor is a little smaller than what they like to see on those.
That category two, the international, seems like it's probably a pretty heavy piece of equipment, if you don't have you know, the three points not heavy enough to handle that, that size of a piece of equipment, it's gonna cause you more problem.
Yeah, and we just, we just wanted to get some prices on stuff that, like I said, we asked them what they thought was the largest one that we could get. And had them give us a price on it, and that's what John Deere said that's what they would recommend and this case said that's what they would say for that size tractor. We were gonna, we haven't had a chance, because this was all just getting thrown together pretty quick, but we have we're gonna go take a look at one of the cases. I think one of the counties has it, we're gonna look at that and I, I want to say that Cedar County has a John Deere, so we're just gonna look at them, see kind of what we thought would actually work with that tractor, so and we had, we had a couple other ones that Paul was getting prices on, we just didn't have them back by the time this was going out, so there could be a couple other ones we'd look at too.
Matt, Tom Dean here.
Yeah.
Looking at the case mower, it looks a little bit more stable than what you're using now, does that safety issue or?
Yeah, I mean, that's a big part of why we want to switch mowers is for the safety of what, what we're using now. It was made to do like open areas. It used to actually have another wing on it, but the grass was made to drop underneath that just like what these ones are, but it pulls directly behind the mower, or behind the tractor, which then pulls all the grass actually out of a ditch into the road, which is a problem. So they recommended that we put a, either fill the tires on the tractor or put, put weights on them, because it's, it's offset to the side. But it's considerably less weight than what we're already using. The mower we have is massive. And it's way oversized for what we're actually doing.
So what's the difference between this and the bat wing that you asked for last year?
The bat wing was more for like a open fields. This is just, it sets off to the side of the mower, or the tractor, so you can use it in ditches. We could use it on the creek, creek banks to a point. It's kind of an offset thing to where you can use it. You're cutting stuff next to you instead of directly behind you. And the bat wing was more like a finish type mower. This is a, they use these for cutting hay and other things, it just drops everything right where it's at instead of, it doesn't chop it up in little pieces. They cut, it's like a big, it's almost like a big weed eater. They have discs on them with like three, three blades on them, and those spin and they just cut it, and it falls over where it's at instead of being spread all over the place, which is what a, the bat wing, that's what it would have done.
Man, it'll grind up the saplings pretty good too, and the little volunteer stumps and that type of stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
And say if he's got the money set aside, go ahead. You definitely have a safety issue with that mower.
Yeah.
That throws the grass clear out.
Yeah, the grass all over the road. I know.
Cedar jobs.
Considering we do have an ordinance that we're not supposed to have.
I know the, I know the fire chief, he, he has talked to Jose about it several times, and we've got, we get a lot of calls about it, it just, it's something we wanted to switch out, because obviously the safety issues with it. We just had so many other pieces of equipment too that we were looking at that needed replaced, that were in the same age range, and were probably used more often, so that's, we were holding off on this mower until we got through some other stuff, but it's just kind of been pushed by, by the safety committee and, and by all the other people that have called in complaining about it, so that's kind of why we brought it up now, and why it wasn't necessarily budgeted or put into our set aside yet.
Well.
The next, the next item.
I, I'm confused about the next items, let me get that. So I, I guess I'd like you to get a couple more beds besides just John Deere in case.
Yeah, that.
The most expensive people that there are.
Yeah, and that's kind of why we, why we looked at them. We didn't want to go find that lowest-priced off-brand one and bring that to you, and then bring you back something.
I'm just thinking you can, even the John Deere, you can probably do better than Pyramid Services.
Yeah, yeah, and we can, we can shop around before we get it, we just wanted, yeah. It was a fairly quick thing, I think it was right after the last meeting, we got the safety committee talked about it. Jose sent out some emails and stuff, and then we threw it together over the last week and a half trying to get the prices, so that's, that's kind of why we just use those two, and we can definitely shop around other, there's other dealers in Riverside, Macocheta, and all across the country that we could really deal with, so, yeah, we'll definitely look for some more. Do you want us to bring something back? Like at a council meeting in the future, before we buy something, or, or just make find the best one for what we need?
One thing that I would say that you would want to make sure is that whatever one you get parts are readily available, especially the knives.
Oh, yeah.
Um, you know, and maybe, yeah, just just make sure you get something that's got readily available parts.
Okay.
I would, I'd say, yeah, bring something back, just so we know.
Okay. That'll work, we'll get, I'll see how many we can get, there's, there's quite a few.
And I don't know if we need to see all of them, Matt, just bring us the, bring us the one you want.
Okay, that'll work.
The cheapest one. We might talk about a comparison now.
Okay.
Remember, the cheapest is not always the best.
I understand that, we just need some differences. All right, discussion, discussion over, you know what we, we need from you, Matt?
Yes, sir.
All righty.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. For discussion item, the consideration to develop an equipment vehicle replacement program or set aside program, discuss. I guess my discussion point was, was, I think I've been telling people to do this for the twelve years I've been on the on the council, so I thought we've been doing it.
No, they haven't been doing it, that's the problem.
Well, it sounds like they have, he said he had some and it's set aside.
Okay, but all the trucks, all the pickups were never done?
That's because we was buying them faster than you could set aside money for.
We, we bought more than we have employees.
We want to give a little presentation, I guess, Gordon, to explain. So.
Bring what our balances are in our reserve accounts, but we have not put anything into any of the reserves except for the fire department since I came. And there, in the fire department, we put all the unspent dollars of the, of that department's budget into the fire equipment reserve. We do that, that's the only one that we have a policy for.
Police departments done it.
Not quite, so it's a little different. So you mentioned a policy set by policy, the fire department has their money's roll over into that fund, and.
Fire department has a set schedule, a schedule of which truck they're going to replace what year in advance, so they can build their funds to actually pay for that vehicle.
Right.
And not just pull it out of their rear, oh, we'd like to have a new home this year.
Matt has, Matt had that at one point also.
There are schedules of replacement.
The police department has a schedule.
Yeah, I don't think it's the schedule issue, I think what, what happens is every year they basically have to fight for what they have scheduled. So every year they kind of have to come in the budget cycle, in the whole goal setting and say, okay, this is the year that we planned on getting this vehicle, we still need it. Council, can we, can we get it? And council goes through the process of comparing that to everything else that they have to do, and.
That's the thing, there's, there's no, when you build a program like that, that money goes there no matter what, no matter what you have set off.
That's the difference.
It goes there.
Yeah, that, and that's, so that's what is being requested, and so that we have that money go there. I think that's what the thing is, but.
It goes there and you don't touch it.
I'm confused.
There's still a nuance, if you let me get it out.
This is what we've been telling you to do for twelve years.
So, so the nuance is, do we set it up like the fire department? Or do we do a, a set aside where you just put the money in it?
Well, yeah.
In the budget, there's a set aside. We've been using the set aside amount to purchase the current year's vehicle, and we've been doing that.
I think what we want is, is if, if, if the chief want, chief knows he wants a new, needs a new police car in twenty twenty-three, he works towards it. Okay, I'm gonna put ten thousand in here, put ten thousand next year, and ten thousand next year. So when he goes to buy a police car, he's got thirty, thirty, forty thousand dollars sitting there, and he just goes and buys it, so.
I think what was happening, we just provide that annually in each budget to budget for the police car. That's the difference.
Well, I remember, I remember in the budget process, I asked the chief and Matt, how many times they've had to put off buying equipment because there wasn't any money.
As far as I know, they have purchased all the equipment since I've been here.
Chief?
I think there was a year we had to skip.
Matt?
We've had, I think, two years that we had to skip. We have had a schedule set up at least since two thousand twelve, I set one up. We've followed it, we have made changes to it based off of changes in personnel and other things. But we have had a schedule set since at least, it might have been two thousand eleven. But I think it's two thousand twelve, I made the first one, maybe they didn't have that before that. But we have one right now, I've given it to the council every year since I first made it, and it's been available to everybody.
But man, how many, have you ever had to delay getting a piece of equipment you wanted because there wasn't money?
Yes. That's, how, how we do it though is, we put, so we ask for fifty thousand every year. And that, some of that is a rollover to the next year, and some of it is to purchase the vehicle that year. Which is the same thing as if I save it from this year to next year and then buy a truck. So we could save fifty thousand from this year and buy a truck next year, then save fifty thousand next year and buy the truck the next year. But it's the exact same thing as me taking the fifty thousand this year, buying the truck the next year, buying the truck. That's basically what we're doing now, instead of saving it, and then it's still having to have it appropriated the following year. We're asking to have it appropriated in the year we purchase it, out of the budget instead of, which it would come out of the budget anyway, but instead of out of a set aside.
Yeah, but Matt, everything you buy costs more than fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
Most of the bucks cost way more than that.
Right, but if I take fifty thousand and put it aside every single year, and the council says, yes, you can have fifty thousand every single year, I, I have it figured out for about twelve, I have it figured out for twenty years, but I can't tell you that in twenty years they're gonna cost whatever. Over the next twelve years, that fifty thousand will carry us and buy every piece of equipment that we need. I just have to have fifty thousand every single year, and that might have to be tweaked up a little as we go on to fifty-three, fifty-five, but it's never gonna be, I need a hundred thousand to buy something, or it's just, I have to have that in order to make the purchases in the future, and I have to be able to take, so say I buy a twenty-six thousand dollar half-ton, I have to have that other twenty-four thousand put set aside, so that I can add that to the fifty the following year or two years from then, to get that piece of equipment, so.
Come on, Matt.
I, I'm confused.
He's asking for fifty every year.
Right.
So he might spend twenty-six this year until he's twenty-four, so then he can buy the big truck.
So then the next year he gets fifty.
Plus the twenty.
Plus, plus the.
He, he, he wants to roll it over.
But he says that's not how he does it, he spends it all.
We do spend it all because we haven't ever, we haven't ever just gotten the fifty.
It, it's the same.
We did that, we need, we asked for the twenty-six thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars to get a half-ton truck. You guys give us exactly what we need, and I don't have any to carry over.
Once you feel more comfortable knowing that you're gonna buy a, a forty thousand dollar truck in three years, and we give you fifteen thousand dollars a year for three years, and then when you get that money, you go buy it, sitting there?
The problem is, I basically, with the amount of equipment we have, like the skid loader, the trucks, the end loader, the tractor, in order to do it, it, it's a, we have enough equipment that it takes buying something every single year. Just to stay on like a thirteen, fourteen-year replacement schedule on the trucks and dump trucks. Now, if we want to extend it out to like a twenty-year, then we could do that. It's just, I don't know where the breaking point is, where it's not where the vehicle isn't worth it anymore. I know we have a two thousand four F three fifty that has started costing us quite a bit of money, and the doors are rusting off of it. And it's not, because we don't take care of them, because they get washed every single time we plow, they're washed, I won't say every week, but every other week at a minimum those trucks get washed, they get underbody cleaned, they just, fourteen, fifteen years is too much on those trucks. So any, I, I just feel like anything over that is gonna start, well, like I said, the, the doors are rusting off that truck. Yeah, there's just a lot of issues with it.
I'm reading the discussion item, and down at the last sentence says, there are some thoughts from the finance department that would prefer departments create a vehicle and equipment replacement schedule that would be funded annually or fund a reserve fund annually. Is that what you want, Gordon?
Yes, I'm not sure that quite understand what, what that means. I just, I think we need to talk them about what the council wants us to do for putting money into it. Do you want to budget so much a year, fifty thousand dollars a year, spend what they need for the trucks that they're going to buy that year, and the balance be rolled over? Some people thought council wanted the entire unspent balance to roll over into. I, yes, my question is, do you want to budget a set aside? Use portion of the set aside for that year's vehicle purchase and the balance be carried over?
Yes.
So, question I have is, in the, in the rollover at the end of the year, are we talking, say for Public Works, all the funds that they have left at the end of the year, roll that into a separate?
Well, that's what I wanted to know, Jerry, what does.
Like the water, the sewer.
Well, that, I guess the council would have to decide, because each one of those, the sewer, water, and streets all have set aside.
It has some kind of a vehicle attached to them that needs to.
You can't really do that, Jerry, because there's a lot of projects that aren't gonna be done this year, because we put them they're on hold.
But that doesn't affect the vehicle set aside.
So.
Vehicle set aside should only be used for vehicles.
So at the end, let's say the end of the last five years, because there've been a lot of, a lot of money left in the budget.
I don't think so.
To roll over into a fund.
I, I guess I would have to look, because I don't know, I, I honestly don't know. I don't think there's been much money in the set aside account.
I'm saying in, in their budget, leftover from their budget.
It's been the same, it's been the same for at least three years that I've been, it hasn't been, it hasn't been moved. How much was that?
How much is that?
Well, Matt mentioned one number, uh, it's like, I think he had mentioned something like eighteen thousand or something, I think. There's, there's several, maybe the highest might be twenty-four thousand, and they, they, it's been sitting there for the three years, and typically, say even when we just did the police squad car, we could have tapped that, but we left that alone, and we used, we used the general fund that was allocated for that year, that, that year, so it's kind of been sitting there. I think Muckler used it maybe frequently, Gordon really hasn't, and we haven't messed with it, it's been sitting there. So the, the funds that Matt mentioned earlier that we're going to tap into for, for the piece of equipment, it's going to be those funds that's been sitting there on paper for, for about three years.
They've been there for five years, because I haven't put any money into the account. So I'm kind of with Jody, the fire department, they, they set aside money every year for a purchase down the river. In their budget, police department, Public Works, they just set aside X amount of dollars every year, because two years from now, I'm buying this piece of equipment, this is what it's projected to cost, it needs to be in a fund that I can't touch.
Yeah, see, I call that a reserve.
Well, first of all.
I've been, I've been kind of advocating reserves, uh, since I've been here.
You want the reserves for operations.
Six months worth of operation costs and stuff.
But right, it's, but the same concept is, is presented here. And the other side of the story, which I think is Gordon is sensitive to, is that. And the other side of the story, which I think is Gordon is sensitive to, is that we're on a cash basis system, which means he has one account to pay bills out of and if we have reserves, it may create some hindrances for him to get access to certain cash if he has to pay bills. Typically depending on when the money comes in and when it needs to go out, they're all going to be, you know, uh, corrected and, and made, made whole by the end of the year, but there could be times during the year that he needs access to funds. That was the argument he, he made. Now personally, I think anytime that comes up, we have enough time to come back to council and express to you what, what's going on. So you know and give us okay and then we can get the funds to it and I think it still works out. It just, it gives us a little bit more opportunity to be where we are, secure where we are financially. Because anytime those situations come up, we get to discuss it. But that's essentially the, 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 the pros and cons to it.
So you're saying if, if there's a reserve account set up and say every month or whenever you put money into that reserve, at some point you may need money that's in that reserve that you can't get out. Is that what you're saying?
There, there could be limitations on using the reserve. That, and the council usually has the last word.
There should be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to clarify that that's what you're saying.
Yeah. So it's the same thing with equipment versus operations. It's just a reserve.
How hard is it though to, like, we, we do that inter loan, inter fund loans, loan ourselves money? Why couldn't we just do it like that? I mean, we have a, we have a reserve fund for equipment, Public Works. You need it to pay a bond payment or something. You come to us and say, I need to transfer this amount of money out of this. And as soon as we get our money in and property tax time, we'll put it back. That time comes and then you, you do a general fund, transfer the money to the, it's just gotta balance itself out at the end of the year.
It's a little extra work for Gordon, but that's exactly what I would be saying. I, I would say we would have enough time to be able to do that.
Not not when you cost a million dollars to buy a fire truck, one truck.
Well, even when that happened, we still had, you know, we still had to make room for that and, and yeah, we did it.
You gotta go through and put a time, a lifetime for each vehicle. That's the first thing.
Jody, that, that, yeah. Matt has that.
Thirty, fourteen year cycle.
And then we have a policy for the police department that we replace the vehicle every two years. I mean, you know, and, and since there.
But I, you know what I would like to see that we'll probably do this year is have a capital improvement plan. See, we were so tight with what we were spending on. We didn't have room adding new things to our capital, uh, improvement plan. So we hadn't talked about it. So I think what you're, you're, you're probably seeing is that you haven't seen the vehicle replacement and that would be in a capital improvement plan. You would know what year certain things are due to come up. Things would happen, maybe wouldn't come up, but at least you would see a, a plan that we're supposed to be dealing with that uh, in year this and year that. So that's partly because we've kind of been digging out of some projects that, um, now we're going to probably be able to do some more planning.
What do you recommend? That we do the reserve fund with council approval? We have emergency?
That's what I would recommend.
That's why. So do you have, each department has their own reserve fund or you're just gonna put?
Each department would have their own reserve fund.
That's perfect. I like that. And then I guess the question would be, this budget year is too late. But, you know, this next one, I guess what they really need to find out is what can they afford to put aside? I mean, you know.
There's that.
Projects are they gonna not do this year so they have set aside for a fund?
Well, actually it'll be for next year because this year's money's spent. We already budgeted it.
Well, unless they wanna.
And there's a certain amount of general fund.
They already set money aside.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's a certain amount of general fund that they will be able to use. And then if they're like, for example, if they found some other efficiencies and they could put more in there, I'm all for it.
Well, and that's, that's just it. Is there a policy that we could not get into in depth? Let's say your budget's the chief's budget this year is seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. He does an awesome bang up job and he only spends seven hundred thousand dollars. So to me, his extra ought to go straight to his, straight to his reserve fund. Bang, just like that. So then that gives, these guys want all this new equipment. Now this gives them some incentive to, to run their run their department on tight string.
Yeah, but that, that's gonna be kind of hard for Matt to do because Matt also has projects in his budget. So if he doesn't do one of the projects, then
Right.
you're saying put it in that run, but that project never got done.
Well, if we fund the project, then that money's gotta go to that project.
Right. But I don't know that that's what's being done. See.
I get what you're saying.
I agree. That's what should happen. But the way we do things, we don't, we don't budget each project. We just give Public Works the slump sum and Matt's supposed to figure out how much.
Well, because there's a lot of projects that come up that you can't budget, you can't plan on. You know, but so if there's extra money in the budget now, what happens to it? At least we got a plan for it.
Yeah.
You know?
It goes into a reserve.
Yeah.
Well, this year or the year just ended, some of our activities were about fifteen thousand dollars under budget. We came up with balances. So we were close.
Should be close. I mean, you know, but if you know.
That was after we did a budget amendment. We spent more money after the budget amendment than I anticipated, but we didn't have a problem.
Well, I think we've discussed this to where it's clear to mind.
So setting up a reserve.
So what I would, would come back since we, we set up a reserve for a fire department through a policy. What we'll do is do the same thing for, for the other departments.
Yeah. And I would model it right after theirs because there's.
I would hope not because that is all unspent dollar. And if you do that, you're going to encourage people to ask for the sun, the moon and the stars, the budget request. Just talk about the budget vehicle set aside. I think that is reasonable to roll over, but all unspent dollars, I think you're creating a nightmare.
I've got you helping me with some information that I think might, might might put that to a plan.
I can agree with that a little bit too because if you, you do a set aside that you're setting aside a certain sum of money that's going to pay for all your trucks, I don't understand why you're tossing an extra eight or nine or what's left over in there. The number you picked to set aside is supposed to pay for everything.
But if you have extra money, where you do it at?
It just stays in the fund. It stays in there.
It's in the general fund for the next project or something you don't get done or an overage we have in something else.
You, 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 you want to make people budget reasonably, not encourage them to ask for everything.
Well, and every year we know what the budget was the year before. So if somebody comes back with a hundred thousand dollars more in their budget this year than they had last year, we're gonna go, what do you think that's for? We're gonna say, well, no, your budget.
Unless you could say.
We've got a parks department. I have no idea what our cost for operating that's gonna be. That scares me, Jerry.
Oh, I, I don't know.
That. And there are need, I mean, needs and wants. We talked about that. But we have a park, we're gonna have to maintain it whether we can afford it or not, I think. That, that's kind of our problem.
Well, and the, the hard, hard reality is, is we have equipment that needs replaced.
No disagreement.
There's gotta be a plan. I mean, you know, they can't just walk in here in January at eight-thirty at night after we've been talking about something for two hours and say, oh, by the way, I want you know, it's just not gonna be able to, it's not the way you run a city.
I agree. That's what, so you set a number aside and it goes in there every year and then you.
Right.
And if you need an extra.
They have to budget it though. That's the budget and that's where it goes.
And then if it comes down to the point where you thought a car was gonna be eighty and comes back eighty-four.
Figure that out of your budget.
Your budget or you ask for it. Either they ask for it or you figure it out of your budget. And then you have to tweak your request because vehicles are going out of your.
Projects that you need to get done.
Well, it sounds like there's a balance. Let us play with it a little bit, but I think we're in the, in the direction. We got the idea of where you want to go.
All right. Discussion's over. So, city admin report.
Yes, sir. Um, this update on wastewater, uh, we did get our, our grant in, uh, and it lined up being just shy of two million. Uh, I know originally I was thinking I was gonna be able to go for the whole seven. They get beat up on a little bit to, went down to five. Uh, basically, uh, E D A has made their determination that they wanted to move with projects that were a little closer, uh, to shovel ready, meaning they were already designed at least at fifty percent design, if not more. So, uh, we're not quite there, even though we're, we're moving along. Um, so we were kind of, uh, regulated to just around two million dollars. Uh, so we put in for that, um, that will still assist us in keeping our rates down low if it happens. So, um, we're crossing our fingers on that. Uh, while we were, um, in the process of researching for that, uh, we had, um, inspectors come down and look at our, our current system and they noticed right off the bat, um, how much dust we get from the gravel road. We wind up, we go through a lot of filters during the summer. Um, and so even if we get new, a new system, that's always going to be a challenge. So one of the things they recommended is that we, uh, look at, uh, the RISE grant and, and, um, that might be something we look at. So I'm, I'm asking ECIA to kind of give us what that would look like and, and what that would require and all that. So, uh, the next deadline, uh, for that grant would be in September. So we got a, a month or so to see if that's something that we'll be interested in going after. But essentially that would pave the road to at least, uh, um, east boundary of the, um, wastewater treatment facility. So that.
What does it cost to tree sap the road?
I'm not sure.
We'll spend about four hundred and thirty dollars a month on it. I want to say it's, uh,
used to be called oil, two dollars a foot or something.
They use tree sap now. The way you'd have syrup. Out in the country, you know, they, they put like a four hundred foot in. I want to say it's like eight hundred bucks a four hundred foot. It's like two, two bucks a foot or something, something close to that. So if you have a thousand foot, it's a couple thousand bucks.
So right now it is a county road. So, um.
County road in front of our property.
Yeah.
We have to actually maintain that road also. I mean, it's a shared it's a shared road. We, we pay for rock. They do the work. They haul it, but we still pay for the rock. Um, we have tried putting dust control on there and it just doesn't seem to last. I don't know if it's because it's a the trap that's on it, how much traffic it gets or what the deal is, but.
They do that, have they done that just once in a year or they do it twice a year?
We actually did it ourselves because it was, we had a, we had somebody come and show us some stuff that we could put down with our, with our brine bars. We put it down. It worked for a short amount of time and then quit working. We haven't ever done the tree sap.
Yeah, that.
It was cheaper to buy the filters. So that's, that's what we've been doing is just we replace the filters probably every week.
Tree sap, they put it down in the spring, again in the in the late summer. Last most of the year. If you do it every year, it kind of builds up so that you don't lose it over.
In the long run, I don't know how much filters cost and.
Four hundred and thirty dollars a month.
You could put a lot of tree sap down for that.
I just, I know, we had me talking about paving the road. I don't know if that's what you guys were talking about. I would, it would be very hard for me to justify us paving the roads to the sort of.
Considering we can.
I, I'm talking about putting tree sap down. To knock the dust down.
And this is just if there's a grant, if there's money out there, um, especially if we don't have to worry about matching and all that.
Stop changing our filters weekly and do it maybe once a month. That, that tree sap is gonna pay for itself in the first two months.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
I, I have no idea.
I don't, I don't know. I mean, you usually get a cost of how much it would cost to run.
Oh, yeah. I think it would be worthwhile because it is, it creates an issue for our operation and maintenance. And it will be for our new system as well. So we'll save, we'll save funds. Okay, um, I asked, well, Melissa shared with me the, the new Cubby's, uh, sign provision. Uh, if she's still there, I asked her to kind of chime in and kind of walk us through that.
I'm still here.
So they're, they're looking at it. They can see it.
I like it.
Okay, is that what you guys were thinking?
Exactly what I was saying.
So right now they're running twenty-five percent off until the fifteenth. If that's what you want, then I can go ahead and get it done.
In your budget?
Well, it's in the Cubby Park. It's in those, that extra Cubby Park money.
Is there any way we can make the address a little bit bigger?
Yeah, I don't care. We can do that.
I don't know. I.
For what purpose?
I guess.
Yeah. So you know that you're at the, read that? I, I don't know. I guess maybe you know.
Probably somewhere around there. I'll have one of them on one side.
Maybe you don't need it. I don't, I don't know. That's fine.
I mean, a lot of, a lot of the signs don't really have the address. It was just something I thought because it's kind of an odd location. Would be nice to have on there. I would, I would like actually the addresses for all the parks. I can ask to have it a little bit larger.
I mean, it looks, I like the looks of it.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks, guys.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, a couple more things I wanted to touch upon. Uh, one, I think we just got, uh, all the, the last minute, um, logistical policy and, and resolutions that we needed for the C D P G. So the next step is to, to actually develop a, a program. So we did put in a, an application and it was really basic. Uh, but I think, um, I'll have to kind of talk with the program coordinator, see what we can use the money. Or, um, there's a couple of things that, uh, we had in mind is if we can, uh, make the, uh, food pantry, uh, building more accessible. Um, we, we had a, a citizen try to utilize the food pantry and, and, and trip because of the way the stairs are and it's not ADA. And it also, the stairs come onto the sidewalk, which is also not ADA. So we'd like to see if we can get a rear, uh, rear entry and which go right into where the food is kept and they can devise the food, maybe give them a little table or something in there so that they can manage in, manage in the facility.
That's still in the pump station?
Yeah, it is.
Is it?
The little.
Pump station down next to the town hall?
Yeah, I don't even know what they call it. So round back where the no, we have carport is entry from that versus coming up on the sidewalk and there's no rail and all that kind of stuff. So, um, we think we can do that with a minimal cost, a couple thousand dollars. Um, then, uh, there's been talk and I'm gonna make sure that we can still do it, but we wanted to, uh, maybe help out the downtown restaurant businesses with some type of voucher program, which we can feed funds into that. Uh, there's also, uh, some assistance we want to do, uh, with the food pantry at the school, school district. And, uh, then also help, uh, the food pantry, uh, with just restocking itself. And uh then also help uh the food pantry uh with just restocking itself. So I believe that'd take up the, the twenty-five thousand, but I want to make sure all of that's going to be reimbursable the correct way. And that, that all falls within the program that they have set up. So um, once we do that, uh, we'll have to have a public hearing uh on that plan. And then we can actually move forward with actually dispensing funds. So uh, we're getting, getting close to that, but. I just want to kind of let everybody know because there's been a lot of interest about it. Let's see. Oh, just a kind of a capstone because I talked about uh reviewing some of the streets uh with Matt a couple of weeks ago. After looking at it, they're probably much more expensive than we talked about the resources and being able to address it immediately. But what we'll probably have to do is bring it up through a capital improvement plan so we can start having some kind of maintenance schedule that. Even for our roads that we can start looking at it. And even if we don't have funds for it, at least it's in our planning process. And we can be able to see that. I know we're going to have at least a work session or planning session on the uh. Johnson County Cedar Road. So that and other roads probably be a good time to talk about some funding strategies. Um, and then another thing, I just want to let folks know that uh we did have uh, uh, our first code enforcement that uh. Um, fell within our two hundred and fifty dollar fine mark uh for high grass. So for first, uh, first um, first offense violator. So uh. They're going to be getting uh billed on that. And second violation shoots them up to a seven hundred and fifty dollar fine. And third, a thousand dollar fine. So um, it's gonna get real serious, real fast for our folks that's not keeping up with their, their, their high grass. So. And then I think if Kevin wanted to jump in on that, we are, uh, even though it doesn't look like it, we are looking at uh one of our challenging properties, properties on the east. I don't want to name.
Yeah. I'll just jump in here. I'm going to take him to court and we're not gonna bother with the missile infractions because it doesn't, it doesn't work. So I'm in the process of getting that process started again. I did talk to his, I asked his attorney if he still represented him. I got no answer back. So I will start that process with the uh Cedar County District Court.
But.
Yep.
Got any more attorney reports?
Nope.
All right, you staff here say? Nothing? That's why she's not staffed.
I know.
Next, we got comments from mayor and council members. You have a comment?
Yes, um. We need to look at something up at Cubby Park for parking. I went up there for a Little League tournament and. Crestview has had to put cones out. Stopping them from parking in their back parking lot. Um, the residents. The front of their houses are full, all the way down, almost to the chief's house one day. So. I don't know if we take the barriers out. I mean, do we, does Bruce on that?
So I'm, just for, there was more parking was supposed to happen. And they decided to take it out. And I was assured that it wasn't going to be a problem. Although I, I didn't vote for it. I, I guess I don't understand what we're wrong. Melissa?
Um, yeah, we're wrong. So it, it would be. A norm, yeah. We need more, the parking added back on. It was one of those items that we took out during value engineering. Hopes that we would be okay, but this year, um, even though we're not at full capacity even for tournaments, everybody is driving themselves, which is. Which is what we want them to do um with this year. So I would recommend putting that parking back in. We haven't removed that barricade down there at the bottom. The intention was to have, use that grass space as overflow parking for this year. But it's just been uh too wet. However, if you give the okay that we're gonna eventually put that parking back in, we wouldn't care as much if that gets torn up.
Well, that wasn't gonna be my question.
Right. But without knowing if that's gonna get added back in, we didn't want to damage that area.
Bruce on what?
That, all that rock? That, so you bought that?
We can't just add rock though, because that would go against code.
You can't do gravel. Um.
So one thing that we were doing, I mean, I have the original engineer's estimate and Matt was gonna give me kind of an estimate of what it would be if Public Works put it in. So that we could um, could do that. We don't have anything major going on again until. Uh, maybe in the fall. I don't have anything. I think I have a couple Friday night things, but that's it. So there is time in there before something else.
So I guess the thing would be is what did we cut out? How much was it? Is it gonna cost to put it back in? And how much money is left in our budget that we didn't spend that we thought we were gonna have extra?
We transferred about two hundred and fifty thousand, I think, to the widening of the Bronic Park. That money has not been spent. That can go back.
Could be transferred back. That's, that's why I'm saying, let's find, let's find out where we're at to what we need to do.
But I think there's still quite a bit of money, isn't there Gordon, that you didn't transfer over for those extra items that would come up?
Left a hundred thousand or so in there. I don't know what the balance is. But you have, you have to look and see how many things you have purchased and what you have yet to purchase.
Right. Yeah, I think we, I think just speaking off, I think we probably still have about eighty thousand dollars in there. That we can, that you guys can use for whether it be parking or other, there are other items. I think in March I brought up a list of items that still hadn't, that were kind of cut, but would be nice to have added back in. So we can revisit that if you'd want with the estimates I have.
I think that's what we need to do. I mean, I understand we want to lengthen. Lengthen base lines and stuff, but if we ain't got places for the people to park to come and play, then, then you know.
And I have those, I have, I have those estimates as well. I mean, you know what I mean? I can bring everything that we have ready. And, and then you guys can decide where you want to prioritize the other projects.
The tournaments you had, Melissa?
Yeah.
Using the two diamonds or are you using all three of them?
We're just using two diamonds.
So two diamonds and we got that much overflow in, in parking. It's only gonna get worse if you have three.
There's been eight teams on those, the two larger days on the two diamonds. So. Six seems to be okay and eight is a lot. And then we have a lot of times that they move. There's a section that's pretty um. Foul ball territory right there on field one. So cars have a tendency not to want to park there, too.
So how many more? You have a lot of tournaments still scheduled?
Um, I have three Friday nights and then the other ones um, we're not gonna have. The, uh, they were, it was, they were larger tournaments and they were going part in North Liberty, part um in other fields around the area, but those are no longer gonna happen. So the Friday night ones really aren't a problem. There's about um six teams that come for that. So that's, that's an issue. It's when they get, the eight is really the thing and the, the all day.
So where I was going with this was if we don't get the parking lot. Parking situation handled, then we should at least make signs, have signs made for Crestview. Telling no parking will be towed at owner's expense. I mean, we. We don't need to burn that bridge with Crestview. And I don't, I, I am, have no problem making sign or I mean. Us put signs in for them.
So, so that first weekend that we had a tournament, we had a cars that moved in there and when Cheryl called, we found the cars and had them moved right away. And it was after that. So it's been a couple of weeks. They've just always had those cones up there now for probably. Four weeks or so. Um, that's fine. And you know, there was a couple other incidents. There was a couple cars I had to have moved that weren't parked like I. They should have been. In general, everybody's been polite and we checked with the residents to make sure everybody, nobody's leaving trash. Um, everybody's leaving plenty of space on the driveways. I do tell them, you know, you can always park at Lions Field, but just like kids, um, they're gonna park as close as they can. So. I mean, you know, that's, that's just the way, the nature of the beast. So.
Why can't we park on the grass right now?
Uh, we've had it blocked off. It's been too wet. We didn't want a lot of ruts in there if we weren't going to make it into a parking area.
It's still wet today? We haven't had any.
Not, it's not wet today, but the last tournament was two weeks ago. So it, everything's very dry right now.
Don't even tell me. I haven't had water for a month.
I know. So.
Any other comments from mayor or council members?
Casey's ever gonna pay for old parking lot or what should be our new?
Kevin Olson.
I'm, yeah, I'm working on that. They want me to, they want me to take the, take the deed, but we're uh, we're working on that. So I will tell them we need to work faster.
Just curious.
Yep.
One thing I have, one comment I have is, I don't know, a few months ago. Uh, Quinlan from the Lions Club talked to me about how their flag program has exploded and. They've outgrown their trailer and they're looking for places to store their flags. And so. He found, they bounced around several ideas. One of the ideas that I bounced to him was that maybe he bought one of those tonic storage things, kind of like we did. And I suggested that maybe up by the water, South Water Tower, that maybe the city would be okay with putting it up there to store their flags and stuff for their. For their flag thing. Does anybody have a problem with that?
Are you talking about one of those shipping containers?
Yeah.
Twenty footer or something like that?
Yeah, twenty footer, thirty footer. I, I, I asked Matt if he thought it would be a problem. He, he said we can bring it up for discussion here tonight.
Yeah, it's a pretty good service they do.
Yeah, it's a pretty good service they do for town. Most of the money they raise stays in town. Help out for Kim. Then if something happens ten years down the road and we want to build a new jail or something over there, then. They can roll it up and put it somewhere else. That's all I got. Motion to dismiss. Jody, second, Nick, all say aye?